To go up and look at this project and um I did actually notice footprints on on the out onto there. There's like two big columns, one on this side and one on that side. And it was clear that there had been footprints. I don't know who's, I can't identify them, but there are footprints on there and that does seem to be scary. Um, my question is, does it, I I've never heard of the impact view code. Is there, do we have a code regarding that?
So the city does not have a citywide view shed ordinance. Um, there are some particular um general plan policies that point towards needing wanting to preserve kind of scenic or ocean views. And that's really part of the local coastal program and trying to make sure it maintain access to views and resources for the public. Um, there is a specific view shed requirement in the resort recreation zone, which obviously doesn't apply to this project. Um, but the variance finding number four, I think it was, does specifically reference um views and view access. So it says that no variances shall be granted, which reduce or adversely affect access to or along the shoreline, including physical or visual visual qualities of access. So this may not be to properties not directly on the shoreline, but provides a very expansive view of the shoreline towards the harbor um that is currently accessible to the public via Wrigley Terrace Road that would be lost. Should the, a wall of this height that's opaque um would be lost.
I'm just trying to look at because that whole that corner is like a blind corner. I I'm just, I'm just trying to get an idea of it's not like an area where you turn in and you look at the view for visitors to stop. To me, that would be a very safety issue because people should be stopping on that blind corner because there's a lot of, it's a blind corner. And the whole way up Wrigley Terrace, it says no parking, like from there. So are you talking about the view that I'm getting, it's an amazing view. I I I go every day with my dog. And are you talking about that view, just passing by in a vehicle or walking or or um driving by?
Yes, so we're we're not, we're not um trying to insinuate that people have a right to like stand and or access the property in some way. Um, there is no turnout there. Obviously, people do not have a right to trespass on private property. Um, but not only would a a view be impacted by a wall of that height and the fact that it would be solid, but it also kind of creates a would potentially create like a tunnel effect between the large retaining wall on the other side of the road and this one that really kind of creates a pinch point visually along the road as well, which really isn't in keeping kind of with the openness that's intended on any of the roads in the terraces area where really you might have buildings on one side and kind of a more openness on the other.
Well, I'm just trying to look at it from both points of view here. And I mean, that, I never thought about that point. But I did, I mean, it's a great view. Is it my view? No, it's not my view. It's not my property. I do understand that it's on city property and that's how it was built or, right?
But i- it's also, I I guess the view is one part of it. And like Kelly laid out, it's a variance request because it's a request that's significantly higher than what's permitted. So, you know, are there other alternatives to meet the needs of the property owner? And I think that that's the issue is.
And also, when I did go up there, I did notice, like, I mean, luckily, nobody has fallen. But if you sit down there, I mean, it's literally, the wall is not up to code.
Questions for staff?
But anyway, so I'm just saying, like, if he were to come in and say um within the height limit, because I I saw that the chimneys are up there, get up, does it, does he get to go up to that point?
So code currently allows at the front property line a a wall of or fence of up to forty-two inches in height. Um, there were multiple options that were discussed with the applicant representative when they submitted the application. We had discussed, could you choose a material that would be more see-through, like a wrought iron or another design? Would a height less than the six feet still accomplish the goal of keeping people off the property, but be less obstructive or, you know, create, avoid some of those negative impacts to kind of the character along Wrigley Terrace? Um, so the staff kind of explored a number of options with the applicant's representative, but ultimately they decided this was the option they wanted to present to you. And for the reasons discussed, staff felt we could not recommend approval of that.
Okay.
Other questions? Actually, I have one. Um, so the options that you discussed or Anne that you bring up in the staff report, do those also require a variance?
If it's anything over forty-two inches, it would requi-, height-wise, it would require a variance. There are no material, specific material restrictions. Um, but the height would potentially require a variance. But I think if there were mitigating circumstances relating to materials and if it was being more visibility through those, I think it would be easier to justify a variance versus the level of variance that's being asked for as part of this design.
Thank you. Open the public hearing? Anybody wishing to speak for against? Name and address?
Adrian Thorick, two fifty-five East Littley. Um, I'm representing Eric Albert, the owner of the building, as his contractor, who would be building this wall and other projects on the, on the, on the site. Um, our biggest concern is health and safety, and that is our number one concern. The second concern is, we have looked at the variables that we could do as far as doing a fence or a wall, but nothing is applicable as far as the style of architecture. So if we put a glass rail up there, it doesn't go with the Mediterranean style of the house. We're trying to stick with the Mediterranean style that is existing of the entire house. The other thing that was mentioned was we can put a forty-two inch high wall up. The problem with that is, you could still sit on that wall, you could still put a child on that wall, and a child or a person could still fall back eleven foot down on the backside of the wall and have in six-foot high wall that we're proposing has niches in it so that it is semi-transparent. If you stop and look through the niches that we've drawn in, you can take photographs, you can look through it. It doesn't, it it takes away from the tunnel effect and gives it more character and design as opposed to just the wall. There will be lights in those niches as well, which would be lit, which will be very nice looking in the evening and also be safe, be safe to the public. Other things that we we've considered uh was doing iron railing, but we feel that that also doesn't go very well with the architecture. It's also a hindrance that if you put anything up like that and someone wants to take a picture, there's still a railing there in the picture. And I put up a six-foot tape measure in front of the wall, and at six foot, basically what you're blocking is ninety percent of his building and his roof. The rest of it is a small section that you can view over that six-foot high wall. We've also noticed that the tour buses go by and the tour buses are in elevated seats and a six-foot high wall would not hinder their view in any way. So. The, the objective is that, you know, if we can get a variance to do a six-foot high wall, have niches in it to where you can see through it, have light, have safety, have nobody climbing on the wall, nobody able to access his property, which was accessed a little while ago, where a person barricaded themselves in, fought the police and the SWAT team, and trespassed. And we're trying to eliminate all of that as well.
Any other questions? Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seems pretty straightforward. Anybody else?
Hello. I'm Eric Albert, the owner of the property, and uh I want to thank you for allowing us to come up here and talk about this. My family has a long history in Catalina, and it's a very special place for all of us. And uh my dad actually used to own a house, I don't know, about fifteen years ago. And uh it's a beautiful property, and we were delighted to get it back and in into our family. Uh, and, you know, with the recent event that we had, I'm sure you're all aware of it. It was shocking to us. So we thought, you know, we better take a look at this for, for health and safety and our security too. So I, Adrian and I worked on this a lot, and I've given him a lot of inspiration, pictures of the, of the architecture style. And I thought we created something that was very beautiful and would really enhance the community. And, you know, a lot of people do walk by there, and it's a very beautiful place. And I was hoping that we could give it a look where the house would actually look more beautiful and uh complement the landscape. And that's why we we put niches in the walls, um, excuse me. So that people can still enjoy the view. And at night, those niches would light up. So, you know, I don't know, I'm sure you've driven down there at night. It's very dark. And uh if you look on our wall, there's tire marks. Sometimes people hit the wall. So those lights would, I think, would help uh people driving and seeing better. And of course, there are footprints on there, and sometimes people throw trash on the roof. So we're just trying to eliminate that and and uh work with few folks, and we really think this will be a beautiful project and I I think this is really be a beautiful enhancement to the, to the street. I really do. And uh we did, we did, we were out there today and we put the six foot out and you can still see plenty of view. And frankly, most of people, when they stop to view, they, they, they walk past the house and there's a little uh there's like a fire hydrant there, and they usually stand there and take pictures. So, and then you got the whole rest of the, the street all the way up to Wrigley's place. So I I I really don't think there's that much view that will be obstructed, in my opinion. But uh again, I want to thank you for this opportunity and and we, we look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening to you all. My name's Ian Albert, and I've been coming to this beautiful island for about forty to fifty years. And my first house was Sal Vista, if you know where that is. Great place. Then I sold that, and then we bought the Wrigley House. Now, why we've recovered the Wrigley House, just so you know, there's a wall there now, it's about a three-foot wall. People like to stop and eat lunch there, and sometimes they throw their trash over in our yard. Now, during that time, people would walk on our roof because you can walk on our roof. If you look at the house, there's a wall, there's another little area there, they can walk on the roof. And I've had people walk on our roof, and they broke the tile. And then when it would rain, we'd get water in our living room. We had to fix the roof. Number two, deer would walk on our roof, believe it or not. We'd had deer on our roof, and they kind of broke the, the tile. Now, if we had a wall, that wouldn't happen, a tall wall. Also, uh, we have a little jacuzzi pool. And you can see it if you walk over by the, where we parked the, the cars. And they throw beer cans, empty beer cans in there, I found, and I found rocks. And I found uh cigarette butts in the floor there. And if we had a wall, that would not happen. And then one morning, my wife and I woke up, and I'm walking through the house. And on our patio, there was a man sleeping on one of our outdoor couches. So I called the police department. I told my wife, go out in front, wait for the policeman to come in the house. So I walk in the house, and the guy was up walking into our bedroom. And I said, hey, what the heck are you doing here? And he looked, well, I'm, this new, I don't know. Anyway, the policeman came in, handcuffed him, took him back to the car, took him down to the police station. The police officer said, come down in a few hours and sign the papers. Okay, well, a few hours later, I go down to the police station to sign the papers. And the police officer was very nice. He said, Mr. Albert, you don't need to sign the papers. Oh, why not? Well, a boat was just leaving for Long Beach, and we put him on the boat, so he's gone. I, what? You let him go? Yeah, so he left for Long Beach. So that happened. Now, the next phase, there's other things, but I'm gonna skip some of them. In January, my son Eric was out of town. He gave us a call, eight o'clock in the morning. He says, Mom and Dad, you gotta get to Catalina. Well, what's the matter? There's somebody in our house with a gun. What? A gun? My God. He says, yeah, get to uh airport, there's a helicopter waiting for you and your mom, and fly over to Catalina. So we flew over and landed at Pebble Beach. And it cops in there with guns. And they drove us up to Wrigley House, which overlooks our house from the Wrigley House. And they were trying to figure out how they're gonna get in the house without getting shot at. Well, with my brain, I, I butt into the meeting, and I said, gentlemen, I know how you can get into the house. How? Get a robot. We don't have one. Well, get one. So they got one from Long Beach, and they got the robot. And they got a small drone. Well, they got into the house and got the lady and got her arrested. Now, she's in jail now for twenty years with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar fine. Now, the problem was, she shot at the police officer. And thank God, the bullet stayed in the door, because the door was three to four inches thick. Now, if that bullet went through, it would have killed the police officer and shot him right in the head. So thank God that did not happen. We're very, very fortunate. Now, I have some pictures here, if you don't mind me, if I give them to you, you can show them. That be all right?
Sounds fine. Want to grab these pictures and show us?
Now, had we had a wall, that would never happen. Because the front, if you go up to the house and look, the front of the house is all open. By the jacuzzi area and everything, and the backyard, unfortunately, so make a walk down the wood stairs. So we need to protect all that with a wall, and a wall will solve the problem. Now, I don't know if you remember Ralph Moro. Ralph and I were the best of friends. He was the mayor of Catalina. We were good friends. And uh, anyway, I wanted to take this time to talk to you about this. It's a very serious problem. And because of that, you may keep those pictures if you'd like. I don't need them. And my wife and I come over, and we don't feel comfortable in the house anymore, like we used to. Don't feel comfortable because of what happened, and we don't have a wall. And we don't want somebody walking in on us while we're sleeping at night or anything else. So we do need a wall, and I hope and pray that you people help us out and let us build this wall. God bless you all, and thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Would you like to speak? For or against? See no one? Close the public hearing? Discussion or motion?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna start discussion and see where we go with this. The uh, when I first heard about this application, you know, I drive, I've driven by the property a million times. And my initial reaction and instinct was, oh, absolutely not. Until I actually took the time to drive up there and actually look at the impacts. I feel for staff, big time on this one, because there's so many circumstances within this that I think um kind of tie the hands of staff with the way the code is written in the ordinance. But when you objectively stand in the center of the street in front of the property and you look towards the ocean, or you go to the edge of the property and look towards the ocean, or to the top of the property and look towards the ocean, what I see is a lot of roof. And so in my head, I'm thinking, okay, if this was my project, how would I address it and how would I look at it? My first gut reaction is, we'll build another story. Because that solves the problem, right? You can't get on the roof. Uh, but that's more of a view shed obstruction than anything. But under the code, they could build another story. They could go in there right now and redesign the house and put up another story and say la vie. Putting a wall up solves the the risk of people entering their property, solves the risk of people getting on their roof to take that amazing picture and or, God forbid, if I'm up there walking with my grandkids that love to walk on walls, fall off the top of the edge of that wall and and then I've got to climb down on a ten-foot wall and pick them up off the pavement. That's not a good idea either. The reality is, if you, if we pick an arbitrary number, like say five feet, you're standing in the center of the street, and you start at five feet, and you look towards the ocean side of that property, and you draw a line from that five-foot envelope out over the top of the, the roof, if the wall was five feet, I think you would still see roof line. You would still see the chimneys that are up on, on both sides. The view shed obstruction happens when you get to the carport. But the carport area there is gonna be open. Building a forty-eight inch wall or something shorter than that, um, I would have to agree with Adrian. It's just gonna be more of the same problem. You can get up on a four-foot wall. I don't think it's going to hinder them from doing what they're doing. It's a super dark area. It's super poorly lit. Um, putting lights in the wall makes sense. I think that maybe at some point in time, we as a commission should look at view shed and have some uh better defined ways of managing view shed. I'd rather have them build a five-foot eight-wall. So could they build the wall five-foot four and tie it right into the ridge line, make it tall enough that it's gonna remove the ability of somebody getting on their property and or getting on the wall, I guess is the biggest issue, is getting physically up on top of the wall. I don't think our, you know, your hands are tied with the code being forty-eight inches. Well, kids are jumping forty-eight inch walls all over town. So I'd almost be inclined to let them build the wall, because I don't think it's gonna impact view like like the staff report suggests. I, there's a building in the way.
And on to what you just said was, I agree, if they want to go up, they could go up. And if they, it just so happened they built down. Because the house next door is from the street up, which then you can't have, it obstructs the view as well. So they can build another story legally, and that would obstruct more view, just like you said. So. And safety is, to me, variances, there has to be a hardship. There has to be, we have to really think about approving variances. And safety to me was, is a huge issue when I went up there. I actually went up there again today and, and looked around. And unfortunately, I don't know, fifteen years ago, we wouldn't be having this discussion. Catalina was so safe. Now, I mean, it's just, I I I got a phone call today from a person who let me know that there's someone coming in their backyard on camera, taking things while, you know, and they have children, you know, and it's happening often in an area and um, it's happening more often in this town. And unfortunately, and I I think that um with the incident that happened, that uh safety is a factor for me regarding this project. And like I said, they can build up, so I think the wall would be less impact.
The, the reality is, I think we're much less likely to have another intruder enter a home on the island with a gun than we are somebody that had too many Kool-Aids and gets on a roof to take that amazing picture. That fall from that top of that roof going the ocean way? I mean, that's, you won't survive that.
No. And I actually went up because I, I wanted to see, there was actually footprints. I couldn't believe it, but there was footprints. So.
And any other comments before motion?
Yes, um, I'm just curious about, um, I'm not against this at all. I think it's a great idea to protect the homeowners just in general. Um, and I don't really think, I mean, most people stop further up the road by the Wrigley stairs to, just a safer spot. Um, I'm just thinking like the holes in the wall, I, I don't know, I would think somebody could still boost themselves up to the top. I mean, are the holes a good idea or that's kind of where I was thinking, like, are they necessary? I mean, I agree with the lighting, but are the holes necessary? I, I just think a drunk person can still boost themselves up for the
But I don't, are they, are they, what's the size?
Because that would be a six-foot drop. I mean, plus the ten.
Yeah, I think you made yourself clear.
There are going to be a variety of sizes. They're basically approximately two foot to two foot six wide and about eight inches high. So they're basically little tubes. On his property, he has um some niches down by the entranceway. There are three niches, and he wanted to mimic those. As far as the placement of them, they're going to be randomly placed, and they're not going to be placed in a, in a position to where you can climb. There'll be one at the top where it's too high. There'll be one on the side, but there won't be anything next to it and so forth.
I guess to build on what you said, I had the same thing. I'm thinking four-foot wall, a six-foot wall, people are gonna stand on it, clearly. Especially on that, it's a pretty heavy pedestrian and golf cart road. Um, which is why I kind of liked the, the staff idea. It sounded like they were trying to promote wrought iron, like what's on the front of the property. And what I like, I mean, and it sounds like staff was even open to doing a partial, like a four-foot high wall with a wrought iron on top, which is the classic Spanish design. The good thing about that is it does provide traffic barrier. Somebody's gonna run off the road, and it sounds like they do bump the wall. So you want to maintain that. But then also, it guarantees people aren't gonna be standing on top, probably. I think a six-foot wall without a little wrought iron spikes on it is gonna be stood up. If not jumped from there on to the uh roof. Deer jump six-foot walls. So I would even suggest going a little higher with the wrought iron than six feet. But have a, what is it, forty-two inch base wall and then an iron fence that went with the rule of thumb is eight feet off the ground for deer not to jump. And, you know, that's probably gonna stop them. But I, I've had, I think, you know, anybody who has a roof anywhere near the ground has deer on their roof. At least for another five years. And it's pretty real, they do pretty serious damage. So that's kind of where I was leaning.
I would prefer to see, you know, wrought iron, like you're saying. But for what it's worth, deer can jump higher than a
Yeah.
In my garden, they jump higher. They've done twelve. So, but I think it's, and then it's a precedent too, because, you know, we're talking to view shed and to say, well, you could just build and to say, well, you could just build one more story. I know there's that, you know, the fourteen, thirty, you know, but I don't know of anyplace else that has such a view as that, that, I realize that's permitted. But there's the other element of the view shed right there with the seating thing. So would we really approve another story added on the top? And there's those other lots that if someday they sell and get built on, do we wanna see solid wall all the way, you know, up to the, the turn? So I, I think it's great to have something up there, but not, uh, not to have it be a wall, a, a thick, heavy wall. And even with a few viewpoints at different heights or whatever.
Yeah. Okay. So do we have a motion then? And if it gets seconded, we can discuss it further, I guess. Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
I, I saw that we didn't have any opposition or anything for or against it, correct?
Would it be helpful for staff to give you some options to consider?
Uh, I guess what I...
If there's additional...
Yeah.
Well, I mean, in terms of how you could choose to proceed, because it sounds like you're...
Yeah, it sounds perfect.
Um, considering, um, not necessarily at risk, accepting the staff's recommendation of denial, but are looking for perhaps some other options to move forward. Um, the committee does have the options. You always have the option to approve the project, deny it, or continue it. Uh, in this case, the, um, committee, or commission is considering potential options for an alternative design. What my recommendation would be is to potentially continue the item, to have the applicant take your feedback. Maybe give the applicant, as part of that continuance, give the applicant specific feedback on the direction you'd like them to go. And then they could create an updated design to bring back to you for consideration. Um, rather than feeling like you have to approve something with conditions without having seen it um, in, uh, as a design yet. So that's one option you have. Um, the other, another option would be if you want to approve the project tonight, you could make specific conditions on how you want the design altered and have staff work that out with the applicant. That's another choice you have. But, um, and of course, um, if you have any other ideas of how you'd like to proceed, we can give you some, um, advice on how to craft that motion.
I guess my whole struggle tonight is why staff is recommending denial.
Um, to me, that seemed pretty, well, I've seen pretty clear.
No, but I mean, because of the view.
No. Well, it was partially the view and the height of the...
Well, the height is, but that's why they're here for a vari- variance. I get that.
Right. It sounds like they couldn't...
But what I'm saying is, your, well, staff is willing to negotiate if it's to that height that they're requesting, but just in a different, uh, design, like wrought iron, I guess.
But, but the large part of any variance request is that there's no alternative means to achieve the same ends. Right? If the, if the ends are to prevent people from accessing their property, there are alternative means to achieving them.
So, but...
And they just may not be aesthetically appealing. They may not be, you know, meeting the, the desire of the homeowner.
So that's the struggle happening now, like trying to figure out how to come to a, an...
Well, it's...
So that's the struggle happening now, like trying to figure out how to come to a...
The alternative is that staff recommends it, which it's a variance. It's in excess of forty-two inches when we know, when we know there are existing alternatives. So that's, and maybe, Mr. Kennedy, that's where you're coming from, that it's...
That is, that is, well, that, and that's, you know, kinda where I went with the thing. And at the end of the day, um, it's difficult for me to, um, in my head, design something for... I'm not a designer. So to come up with a suggestion that, you know, may be appealing to me but not to the homeowner, I think is difficult. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a dart out here. I'm going to make a motion to approve a structure to the homeowner's liking that has some wrought iron features in the top to keep people from being on top of the wall. But that the wall would not, and whatever structure goes on top of the wall, not to exceed six feet. And to keep the lighting in place regardless what they do. And allow there to be some pass-through visuals like they intend to do. So if they wanna go forty-eight inches with a wall with some lighting features and then wrought iron on top, or five-foot-six with wrought iron on, on the top of that, I'm okay with that too. But nothing to exceed six feet, because then that's not gonna burden the view. It'll give them the privacy that, that they need. And some sort of structure on top of that wall to keep people from, that becoming the next level of egress.
Is there a second?
Just to jump in, um, the motion to approve does need to be for a specific, like, as to a specific project. So we may need to deny the variance. Um, at this specific meeting, they can come back with an updated design, but then the planning commission can review. And with that design being, um, certain, then we can make a motion to approve the variance. But before then, it's difficult to approve a variance for something that might be unclear. I, I mean, if it's a certain amount of wrought iron, that might be what you're proposing, but, um, that motion just has to be, uh, very clearly stated on the record.
Yeah, and you don't wanna design it. I don't wanna design it. So, I, I'm thinking was... All right. The applicants have heard the direction in a general sense, and so has staff. So if we continue this hearing, um, and then, so you don't...
Lose it.
We don't have to do any more noticing or anything like that to date certain, then I think that might be a way to resolve it. And since we're...
Can I, one second. Can I just add, was the motion fully made?
No, it wasn't seconded.
Okay.
So...
Or would you like to withdraw then, even though it wasn't seconded? Based on legal...
No, no, I, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to me. I, you know, it can go, it can go unseconded. I just...
Could a suggestion be made that would be a compromise where the wall could be five-foot high and have one foot of iron railing across the top?
Perfect. If the applicant wants to stipulate that that's their intention to build.
Okay.
Then I will modify my motion to design the wall to five-foot solid and add twelve inches on the top with wrought iron. And I'll make that my motion.
How about making it fortified? Because when I'm thinking, when you actually design it, you might wanna move it a little bit, so let's...
Well, why not leave it at forty-two and wrought iron on top of forty-two?
What I don't wanna do is create, create a base and then be able to climb up the iron railing. I mean, we have a section on the side of the house that has a small wall as well, and it has an iron railing, and you can climb right over it.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um, and that's why I don't wanna do it that way. I'd almost rather postpone it and have them think through this and come back. But do you, is there a second on Bob's current motion? Okay, no second. Um, is there a motion to continue this hearing to the next meeting?
Do they wanna continue it?
Are you guys okay with continuing it, or do you want a decision tonight?
A decision tonight would be best.
The decision might not be in your favor. I mean, there's a...
I'm sorry.
I, I would say based on the discussion, you may not like the decision, but we can make it tonight.
Okay, but this, with the alteration?
No, that wasn't seconded. That was a motion that wasn't seconded.
This would just be on the variance.
It's what's before you. It's what's been presented.
So the variance doesn't look very good. Not that I can predict it, but i- if you want something six feet high... Okay, I'm gonna make the motion, or we have, is there a motion to postpone it?
The owner would like to go forward with the way we project, we, we proposed it.
Okay, just, okay.
Just as is, this discussion.
Asking for the variance, building the wall that we proposed it.
So do we have a motion? To approve or deny the variance request? Um, well, I'll make a motion to try it, is, uh, I move to follow staff recommendation and deny the request for the variance. Is there a second?
A second, yeah.
Okay, discussion before the vote?
I think they're better off and we're better off holding it over, but...
Clearly.
With the continuance, just to come back with a modified...
We, we have a motion, a second, to deny the request. So that's, that's what's out there.
And they wanted action.
They wanted it heard.
Okay, so no further discussion?
Commissioner Kennedy?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Hewer?
Yes.
Commissioner Saye?
Yes.
Commissioner Putnam?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramau?
Yes.
The motion to deny passes.
Okay, then, last. So reports. Um, I, I request, is there like a one-minute update on the transient rental?
Sure. I can give you a short update on the tran, where we're at with the transient rentals. The, uh, we have a survey, the city has a survey out there, um, collecting public information. It's on the city website. We push it on to Facebook. Uh, you can do it online. So anybody that's listening or anybody here, if you wanna go to the city website, it pops up as soon as you go to the city website. Ten questions with an opportunity to expand on those. We're collecting that. That'll stay open through, we posted that December first. It'll stay open through January second at least, uh, depending on the number of responses. Hopefully, we get a lot. Um, and then shortly thereafter, we'll compile that information, bring it to planning commission, give you the results of the survey. And then I think that will give us a better direction. We have a pretty solid list of regulations that we're, um, depending on what categories we wanna pick and choose from to impose, uh, and then we'll start the discussion again. But, um, so that's, that's where we're at right now. The moratorium still remains in effect. Um, as far as I know, we only have one, maybe two applicants that have filed...
Prior to the moratorium?
Or after the moratorium.
We have two before and now we have three after.
So we still have two?
We still have two. They're both at Hamilton Cove.
When, when is the moratorium expire?
August, twenty twenty-four.
End of August, okay. Third week of August, so. Uh, our goal will be in the spring to bring solid recommendations for new le, new regulations to planning commission, hopefully for approval of recommendation to then go to council. So we're not looking to push this all the way till August. Hopefully by, you know, April at the latest, we'll have something in place.
And if nothing, I mean, if we have to have something in place, and if not, are we, is there only a certain amount of ti, extensions you can file?
There are, and we, but we have to show, you know...
The act that you've been working on, okay.
Exactly.
Progress.
Right. So I, I guess the good news is, you know, there's, um, we only have a handful. I thought there'd be many more that we're trying to get on a waiting list to, while the moratorium is in place. So it has not been what I anticipated, but it doesn't mean they're not out there, you know, just waiting. If they know the moratorium's in place, they might not be coming to city hall. So, um, we have not been flooded like I thought we would. I thought we'd have to have a waiting list and a way to address these when they come forward. But I think that's good news. So that's where we're at. I mean, we're, we're delayed a little bit. Our goal is to have this in October, but, you know, the, the deer issue kinda knocked everything, took the air out of everything, and we didn't really wanna put a survey out there when that was going on. Because we didn't think we'd get any attention. So hopefully now we'll get some, some feedback.
Thank you. Any city attorney report? None. Um, anybody else? That's it?
Have a happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Thank you. Happy holidays.